How are you? I'm waiting for the... And it's you. Everybody's mic on?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, if I may address the commission.
Sure.
Prior to the start of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
I move that we go into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss a non-elected, identifiable individual. You'll have to amend your agenda.
Yes.
But we need to talk about some things that have transpired over the last couple of days that we didn't have a meeting since the last situation that came up yesterday.
And there's this four person matter?
Yeah, and it actually is a non-elected person.
Okay, yes.
It's a new hire that we need to discuss.
Okay.
Make a motion to amend the agenda and add executive session under KSA 75-43-19B1. What, we have to amend the agenda first, then on?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to go into executive session under KSA 75-43-19B1 to discuss personnel matters of individuals, unlicensed personnel to protect their privacy.
Susan, I'm sorry.
For 20 minutes, it would include the three commissioners.
Self and Susan.
Justin Mix and Susan Banker. And we will return here at 9:23.
Aye, second. Second.
Motion carried. No, I want to hear what's going on.
We want to hear our turn.
I mean, this is not something new. This is something that's been going on for decades now. So, uh.
We're gonna go back into regular session, so.
Fantastic. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay.
Make a motion to resume regular session nine twenty-three in this room. No action.
You have a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I take a make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve last week's minutes from.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Beth.
Take your chair, don't they?
Good morning. All right. We have a application for a Culver. It will be for Catherine Golden, twenty-four eighty-five Locust Road.
Thank you, ma'am, ma'am. For the Culver, come in. For twenty-four eighty-five Locust Road. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
How's that road holding up?
Twenty-four eighty-five Locust.
Eric, how's Locust doing out there? Oh, fifty-four, right?
It's got spots that may need to do.
Yeah. We might want to look at that next year for on our list.
Yeah. Yeah. It's one of them. Um, next one, had a couple citizens approach on dust control. Need to know how you want to proceed with this. Had a, I know the permit form is on the internet, on our website. So I had them fill them, fill out the permit. And then when I went to charge them, they said they hadn't been charged on the previous year. So I need to know whether we want to charge, not want to charge. I don't know what.
What do we charge? What, what's the process say?
Uh, a dollar fifty. A linear foot.
Linear foot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, that's what it says on the internet.
Yeah. So I'm not sure who got charged. I mean, I believe you, but.
It's this one, uh, it's a James Hagee and a Furman. That's just, here's your actual.
Yeah.
Furman.
Um, and I did go back and look, and if, unless it's put in another account, twenty sixteen was the last I could find, so I don't know.
It was, it's put in a different account.
Different account, okay.
I know some of those we charged for.
Okay. Do you know what account that is?
I wouldn't have any.
Okay. All right.
So, it could have went in just the road and bridge and not titled Dust Control. I don't know that.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's something I need to know.
Yeah.
Do you have, is there certain areas that, that we do that we don't charge?
Not that I'm aware of.
Around the queries I didn't know?
Well, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
We did the road approaches, close to our rock queries, intersections, or a house, or like on Birch down there, or up on the, what was that? Indic, Unique up there. Yeah, so we do do some free hoaling for dust control around our rock queries to help those residents that would create the dust.
Okay.
That is true.
Okay. And I believe that this individual I was talking about there earlier was on Fern Road, which is east of the rock quarry down, not our rock quarry, another rock quarry. So I don't, I don't know. I'm just looking for guidance on this. Do you want to proceed with, okay, that's the way we'll handle it then. I don't believe it requires signature on that. Do you want me to bring it to you before, or just have them fill out the paperwork and?
Paperwork, you can do it.
Okay. All right. That's how we will proceed with that. It's done. Salt, road salt, um, need to proceed with getting our inventory back up before winter's here. We're looking at about, I don't know, twenty, twenty, twenty-five thousand to get our salt back up. Do I?
You do that through Central?
Yes, Central.
Yeah.
Central is where we will call.
I don't think you do.
Where are you located?
Okay. That's why I just want to make sure.
You don't need to prove much.
Okay. The new miner training and site-specific new miner training is completed. Um, we had sixteen hours in the classroom and eight hours at the landfill, so.
Enjoyable.
You have to ask Commissioner Beth. He, he attended. So, I will say that no one.
She did a good job.
She did a good job. No one fell asleep, so.
Yeah, nobody fell asleep. She, she tried to entertain her best, so.
Yeah. So, found out we have some very competitive individuals on staff, so we played some games and what have you, and anyhow.
There's no way you can make in-shore class exciting.
I, I.
They're just.
She did the best she could.
The best she could.
I know, but still.
Right. Yeah. You've sat through them and know, so.
Yes, I've been to.
Um, asphalt, we were gonna start asphalting yesterday, went to the plant, the burner, the pilot light went out on the oil. Got it lit, went back this morning, pilot lights back out. Um, anyhow, we made a call to electrician. He had another emergency this morning, then he's headed over to the plant. So we're gonna get it up and going as soon as it's, the oil's heated. We're ready to finish our spot out at Hyattville, um, and then we're headed down to two hundred and fifty. So, just let you know on that. We are headed tomorrow to Arkansas to pick the truck up, the F seven fifty. Let you know that. Um, Jayhawk Wind. They're still working on private access roads. Um, there's more and more equipment starting to show up in the areas, and they're starting to expand out in their different, different areas. Um, did receive a text over the weekend from a citizen on a rock spillage on the road. I kind of wanted to talk a little bit on that. I do appreciate the individual contacting us. I don't know, you may have been contacted as well. Uh, it was on Highway three. Anyhow, the truck driver turned a corner, lost about five gallon buckets, or three five gallon buckets of rock. Went up to the next corner, um, pulled over to, at his safe area, radioed to the, back to the safety officer on site. They made contact with, uh, the supervisor that was on staff for the day. They immediately, within ten minutes, was, was there and was able to sweep the rock off of the road and with brooms and shovels, so.
Good.
Uh, had a quick response on that. So I did want to touch on that and go from there. I know there was some strong concern on social media about it, but they'd done everything they could as quick as possible, so, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, and KDOT was also going out there to look too.
Right, right. And then they, after they got the shovels and the brooms, then they brought the big broom over and swept the road as well, so.
Can, can I ask how, what is the procedure when something like that happens? What, what would you like to see happen?
I would, first off, if it's a major emergency with rock, I know they had an issue, and it wasn't them. It was another contractor actually lost a whole ten-wheeler load of two-inch rock on Fifty-four Highway.
Came in right after.
If, if it's something major, I, I would hope that they would sit there with their car and flashers until we get somebody notified. But you're more well.
Something major like that, you want to contact nine one one?
Yes. Yes. But something minor, you have my number.
Okay.
And I have all their numbers.
Okay.
One other one that happened out on Fifty-four Highway. I was behind that.
Right.
Not very far behind it. Hit it at sixty-five. There was people there. There was no flashers on.
Right. So.
And I was sideways before I came out of it.
Right. So, but I would contact me. You have, just like the other day, I think that worked very well. It was a pretty quick response. Uh, when I made contact with Jayhawk Wind, they were already aware of it and, and headed that away, or had already had it, um, taken care of, so. And then the excess dirt you had asked about at the last meeting, I did visit with them on that. They said that they won't know if they'll have any excess dirt until they get to the latter part of the project, so, but they will definitely keep that in the back of their mind.
Thank you.
Yep. And I don't know if we can amend it or not, but.
We don't, we don't need that session.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good then. Anything for me?
Did you contact Steve down Porterville?
Steve, yes, they're taking care of that today.
Thank you.
Um, there was actually two areas down there.
I've got one for you, but I'll call you with later. It's up, it's up, uh, north of Shawan, Burgers on Ace, on a Dalian Road. If they want some gravel and some tree trimming, then it's all.
Okay.
Is that road?
Perfect.
Here, I'll give it.
Yeah.
Eric and I met on Friday and discussed a possible road closure from KDOT. They want to come and talk to you guys next week. We drove out, looked at the road. Uh, we know who the property owners are. You know, obviously they just want to come and kind of discuss it. It's on Highway seven. It's a hundred and eightieth street. It's a triangle. So we look up from the air. It's a, what's the road that runs north and south?
Hundred and eighty is.
Well, hundred and eighth that runs.
Seven and thirty-nine.
What's the road that you turn off on?
Um, is it Deer?
Is it Swar, um, it's paved.
I want to say it's Deer. It's the one that runs in towards Hubert Thomas's house, do you know? Off the top of your head. I'm drawing a blank.
I am too. It's paved. Rock quarry is on Fern.
Yeah.
It's on Birch. It's on Birch.
Yeah.
Anyway, with you guys' permission, we'd like to put that on the agenda for next week.
They would like, KDOT would like to be here around nine o'clock, if at all possible, next week during my time.
Deer.
They're just wanting to talk with the commission first.
Okay.
Deer Road, yeah.
So.
And driving up on the road and actually observing traffic and stuff, I can see what they're talking about.
That little birch spur off.
It's just like a little spur. It's like this little, it's not even a quarter of a mile road that comes on the seven, and you have to go up the hill, and then you look back, and you can't see what's coming from basically the north to the south. And seven is dangerous as it is anyway. Anyway, you can make it safer.
Hundred and eighty, five to seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they'd like to come visit with you with some different options or what have you, maybe next week. And they're, they're looking at that whole, that whole road, seven thirty-nine.
Right.
Do some upgrades.
Be nice to take that curve out of there.
I'm not sure exactly, so we'll be able to ask those questions next week.
And that Deer Road, I don't know what any purpose it serves. Railings, I can go with the blacktop.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Anything else?
Yep, thank you.
And your Culver has been, for that bridge up in your area, has been backordered, so, so if we get it.
Like everything else in the world?
Yeah. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we got some fireworks to burn out for Kendall?
Right now, we have four for the year. I expect at least one in two months.
Sure, we have more. Have you do, does someone need to talk to the person over in Maple?
If you want to let her know if you're.
I'll see if I can get all.
Yeah, we haven't got them yet. I'm in hurt for, but there's four that.
So, we're doing all work, just do the names. I, we, uh, there are seventy-five dollar permits and a license permit for, for fireworks. Uh, we approved license permit for Jake's fireworks.
Okay, location?
They don't have a.
Doesn't have it?
See if I can find the, find the addresses.
Wall, Goodlander.
Here we go. Wall, Goodlander, Jake's Fireworks, twenty-two, twenty-one, South Main. Kibbly Fireworks at twenty-four, twenty, South Main. And Hay Fireworks at twenty-four oh nine, South Main.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll have a couple more. Mr. Walls.
I'm here to present my budget, the very first one that you're looking at, the Emergency Management Performance Grant. That is, uh, an annual grant that, uh, as an emergency manager I apply for. This year's deposit amount is seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And the thing is that, the, the primary use for that grant is to support my department in multiple ways that I do it, as written in the contractual. I also pay for, uh, our portion, uh, of the county's Code Red contract. The city pays a portion as well, um, but it's specifically for emergency management and the support of that department. Any questions? Of course, the way that I get that is I have to perform, uh, two exercises a year, which last year did not, uh, was taken out of the picture. Because of COVID, multiple things were, continuing education as well, and attending certain meetings, and, and so on and so forth.
So you'll be asking for eighteen thousand, one grand?
Do what?
You'll be asking for eighteen thousand?
Yeah.
One grand?
Yeah, just eighteen, just barely, yeah. The second one is, uh, in regards to, uh, the department as far as my wages. And then I broke down the contractual costs, uh, with just some line item, uh, items there that you can look at and review. And, um, the increase that I have for this year is due to the fact that, in twenty-two, I will, I will start to increase the, uh, and have some ki, uh, uh, trainings and exercises this year. Um, for instance, with the health departments especially, um, and a lot of the nursing homes and so on and so forth. It's, uh, per the state that I have these exercises with them and brief them on how to get prepared for whatever emergencies we would be faced with. Of course, all the volunteers and volunteer departments, your paid staff, uh, folks, the sheriff and the, and, uh, the city, uh, fire, and, and of course, the police department as well. Then I have down, so I've increased that. That was the only increase I asked for is about two thousand dollars. And that's in regards, because of the traveling next year, uh, more office supplies are used, excuse me. Um, of course, meetings I have to attend, and then the exercise costs are involved as well. So there's my budget. Just a little bit of an increase. Any questions in regards to that?
All right, good job.
You okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, sure do. I think this.
So we'll remind everybody that there's a new new process for budgeting from the state, that, uh, any increases in the budget whatsoever will, will have to have a separate public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, for approval. And so there's a lot of different things we'll be discussing during the budget process.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll be ready for it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Michael?
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Uh, I've been better, I've been worse.
Step up to the.
Either one of the table or?
Either one.
Just, it'd be more comfortable. All right, so, uh, here's where I'm at. Uh, Jackie Spradlin's become a liability to this county, and, and we have to do something about it. Um, when prosecutors create misconduct like this, and it lets criminals walk free, it makes our community dangerous, and we're not talking about guys that were jaywalking, we're talking about murderers and rapists, you know? And, uh, this is a small community. I, I raise a family here. Uh, I, I don't want that stuff going on. When, when, when people get off on technicalities, it's sickening to me, and we, we don't need that here. Not only is it a liability for our safety, but it's a liability for this town financially. Um, I'd like to, I mean, who, uh, there's a big misconception, I think, by a lot of people that I've talked to, and they think there's some kind of insurance policy that covers when these lawsuits happen. And let's be honest here, there is no insurance policy. That comes right out of taxpayer dollars, and we don't have taxpayer dollars to spend on that stuff. Uh, some of the lawyers that I've consulted about this, um, one in particular, he, he drew my attention to a, a case that the legal community refers to as the Beatrice Five. Beatrice, Nebraska. It's a town and a county much similar like this, with a prosecutor to, um, misconduct, much very similar to this. And, um, there was five people that ended up, ended up, uh, getting off and, and suing. And they cost Beatrice, Nebraska, twenty-three million dollars after it was all said and done. That's a lot of money. In fact, it's so much money, it bankrupted that town. Um, that's something that could very well happen here. Every case that comes through now while she's prosecuting is suspect, every single one, not to mention the ones that have already been prosecuted. This is, this is too much. Now, I understand that, um, she's an elected official, you know? At this point in time, there's not a lot that you guys can do about it, but there is some things we can do about it. And one thing that we need to do, the, is we need to force a resignation, which isn't hard to do. The lawyers I've consulted have talked to me, and they've, they've given me a couple different options that you guys could go through. First and foremost is what I'm gonna ask you guys to do, is I want you guys to have a vote on the minute, and issue a vote of no confidence. Now, that's, you might still have to pay her salary. I don't know how, exactly how it works, but get it on the, get it on the vote, get it on the minute, saying, you know what? We have no confidence in this, and, uh, and we don't trust you. And that will protect you guys somewhat too, you know? You guys did what you could do. You're not liable now, you know? Um, that, I think that's a pretty good one. Uh, another thing that we can do is, I mean, flat out ask for a resignation. Look at the Lynn County situation. They were able to do that. I mean, it, it caused a whole lot of problems there, but that situation was a little bit different than this one. This one's all common knowledge. There's nothing, uh, no confidentiality to worry about, you know? Uh, I'm sure the county counselor could help you guys work through that. Why are we paying her? I mean, we're paying her a lot of money to screw this stuff up and, and, and to possibly cost us more money, you know? And, uh, that's not right, I don't think. I mean, I, if, if anything else, if we can't not pay her at all, let's reduce her pay. And I think that would, uh, help encourage her to move along. Um, I don't know. I mean, I spoke to each of you yesterday a little bit on the phone. I've spoke to a ton of people in the community. I mean, these rooms are kind of small. These, uh, these meetings are a little bit at an odd time for a lot of people during the week, you know, so a lot of people couldn't come. But let me tell you, there is a lot of public outcry for this woman to be gone. Um, let's be honest, she's not that great of a prosecutor anyway. I mean, we got people revolving door policy for meth addicts here, you know? And then we got other people who don't, who commit minor crimes, who are sitting in jail for months and months and months that are trying to, you know? I mean, we can, we can get rid of her, and we can find somebody else. I'm not really sure how she got in this position. I mean, I, I do know she was appointed, you know? Let's, let's be honest, this isn't exactly the people's will, okay? Uh, she was appointed in, and then she ran unopposed next time. There was no one else to vote for. That's who they punch, you know? It's not like there was five choices to choose from, and everyone was like, Jackie Spradlin, that's the winner. That's who we want, you know? Uh, no, that's not how it went. She just kind of fell into this. Um, why is she contracting out special prosecutors, you know? I mean, her commitment lies here in this county, nowhere else. She's working in Iowa part-time since she's resigned. I mean, I'm assuming out of embarrassment, but, I mean, let's, let's be honest, why are we hiring special prosecutors? That stuff's not cheap.
She did resign in Allen County?
Yeah, she did on Friday. And I mean, uh.
Same topic?
Uh, I believe so. It's unconfirmed, but.
She would willingly resign in Bourbon County?
Well, she's elected here, so she's got a little bit more pull here, whereas in, uh, there, they could have just fired her, you know? Here, we can't really do that. But, uh, I mean, James Braun, who she picked anyway, I mean, let's talk about birds of a feather here. There's as much controversy about him going on Lynn County as there here. Why didn't she pick him?
Okay, I'll, I can't, there, I can't be mentioning people's name.
We're not, we're not sure how he's employed. Um, he is a special prosecutor, so he would be theoretically an employee of the county. So he is a non-elected identifiable individual. We do not want to name, if you want to talk about his performance or anything of that nature. Uh, he was an elected official in Lynn County, but he is not here, so you can go into executive session with him and discuss those issues if you'd like, but.
It's a moot point.
You can't talk about it in open session.
Yes, sir. Either way, uh, regardless of what the name is, it's costing us money, which, uh, her salary is enough already. I mean, this isn't a huge county. We don't have that many cases, you know? I mean, she should be able to handle it here, and this is where her responsibility lies. She's an elected official here, you know? Uh, we don't need her going out of town, trying to, trying to moonlight, you know, or doing this or that. And like I said, I mean, plain and simple, it is a liability to this town. I mean, and this is not the, this, this Beatrice, Nebraska, isn't the only place like that either. I mean, it happens quite a bit. I don't know what our lawsuits look like here, but I'd imagine there's a few, and I imagine they get pretty expensive, you know? We don't have any money to, to play around with like that, and we don't have money to play around with Jackie Spradlin, plain and simple. But, um, like I said, I, I would ask you guys to at least take a vote of, of no confidence, you know, and get that on the record. And, uh, definitely consider cutting some of her funds off, and let's start trying to, you know, if we can't get her out, let's start trying to encourage her to move along, you know? I think this town could be a really great place. I raise a family here, uh, and I don't want, I'm not, I'm not gonna leave, you know? Uh, I'm committed here, and I'm gonna stay here. I'm gonna stay here until this is a great place to raise a family. And, uh, and I think this is, this is the top of the pyramid right here. I think once we get this one straightened out, a lot of other things will start falling in place. I mean, I hate to keep going back to Lynn County, but there, you know, I, it's, it's a similar situation, and there was a lot of misconduct that surrounded it. And because, uh, as this came out later, because of the prosecutor, he was kind of involved in it, and I feel like it might be the same here. I don't know. It's just a hunch, but, uh, that was kind of the kingpin of it all. And as that changed, other things started changing there. So, I mean, like I said, uh, you guys, we're counting on you, you know? Uh, we can't afford this. We need you guys here, you know? So I hope that you guys do the right thing, and if, uh, if we're not able to do the right thing, then I'll be back at the next meeting, and I'll make sure that I keep bringing more and more people, so you guys can see that, uh, you know, this is the will of the people here, you know? So I appreciate your guys' time, and I, I think that's about it.
Justin, you have any comments?
Yeah, we, we want to hear from the counselor.
Okay, okay, thank you. Bye-bye. Sorry, tax, I'll shoot.
Um, I was instructed yesterday to follow up on some of the comments that were made. Um, there are currently fifty-four jury trials that are pending in Bourbon County. A lot of that had to do with COVID. Um, the courts were shut down, so obviously there was a delay, um, and I do. I do agree on some levels that we have to be careful about liability issues going forward. But because of COVID, we don't have a lot of jury trials that happened over the last, you know, year, year and a half. So those are all in queue. So there should be some, I guess, some comfort there that those have not happened yet. As to the elected official, we did do some checking in the last couple of days to kind of figure out what the law was. We were instructed by different people at this point that, you know, at least penned a week for the no confidence vote. We want to make sure we get our ducks in a row with that. As to cutting her budget, we'd have to publish, go through that process and cutting her pay would create, I think, too much liability at this point based off of the conversations we've had with other counsel and with other people that are in our same type of function in other places. So at this point, I mean, I would pen any action until, for a week to make sure we're on the up and up and that we're, got our I's dotted and our T's crossed. But at this point, she's an elected official, so I concur with his statements that when you have an elected official, it's difficult to be able to move forward on, you know, recall petition, you know, things of that nature. But the process takes time. This isn't the first time this has happened in our county. We've had another attorney that was in the same position that went through the same process. And so there is precedent that's been set here before and we have to go through the processes. So I understand people's frustration. I get it totally, but it's got to work itself out. It's just a process that we have to deal with that's legal.
Would you please put this back on the agenda for next week?
That's what I wanted to hear right there, yeah. Can you come back next week?
I will be here next week.
We'll get some advice from this gentleman here.
Hey, I can appreciate that. I appreciate you guys taking the time to consider it, so thank you.
We've discussed it.
So has everyone else, that's for sure.
And just something, another comment that was made, obviously, it's hard for commissioners and the way that we're set up to know who's called who. So, you know, a learning point, you know, when someone calls you, make sure, hey, I've ever talked to another commissioner before, because you can't. We want to make sure
No string meetings.
Right. We want to make sure we don't have a string meeting. So just be really careful of that in the future. I don't think it was done purposely, but want to make sure. And I know you guys get lots of phone calls, especially on this issue, so just be really careful about string meetings.
Moving forward, he brought this great point up about the new lining and all this stuff. You can go up to the third floor and talk to all of your other county employees who have got to be staged for her absence, significant absence. So moving forward, when we end up with somebody new, which at some point in time will happen, does the county have the ability to set some structure and say where the commitment is or?
No. No, it's an elected official. So what will happen procedurally is, is that when, if the Supreme Court decides to go with the committee's recommendation, then a letter will be sent to the Republican Party and the chair of the Republican Party will convene a convention. And at that point, that person will be appointed. Now, what's interesting about it is the election cycles in next November. So that person could be temporary county attorney and then the election cycle in November, people can run and you guys would get to vote on who the new county attorney would be, so.
But as far as how her that position is held, does the county have any means to set some rules or standards for her? For he or her, the new person, the new prosecutor's
Standard.
An ability to be here?
No. No, no, it's, this is, it's very fluid on some levels. So the judges are the ones who set their dockets. So if you only have a docket twice a week, then, you know, the county attorney would only need to be here twice a week. If, I think I'm answering your question. So if you only have three dockets a month, then the county attorney would only need to be here three dockets a month to be actually appear in court. Now, obviously, everybody knows the courts have not been open. They are opening now. Bourbon County has an open courtroom. People are showing up, you know, having personal appearances. But for the last year and couple of months, they have not been personal appearances. So someone can be in Western Kansas and appear on the eastern part of the state because it's been by Zoom and they've been recognized as being active and legal, so.
Long before COVID though, our county had a situation where the assistant prosecuting attorney carried the shoulders, she carried the weight in the absence of the district attorney. She wasn't here very much long before COVID.
I don't know. I can't speak to that. I don't know. I mean, obviously, I think that the way that rural Kansas is right now, I mean, we have a lawyer shortage. I mean, I know people don't believe that, but there's actually a lawyer shortage happening in southeast Kansas right now. Crawford County, Labet County, Anderson County, Lynn County, Bourbon County, I mean, it goes, I mean, Island County. We have a need for quite a bit of people in my profession and we would love to have them come here, but it's a matter of pay and a matter of just having enough people to fill those positions. So getting somebody, you know, finding an assistant county attorney is not easy. I mean, we've got one now that is good and is paid well and that person hopefully will stay here and we can move on down the road. But it's very difficult to control an elected official on how they run their department. You can't tell the sheriff or the treasurer or the Kendall or anybody else what to do with their departments because they're elected and that's the process. You guys elect those people and then they can run their departments the way they see fit. Now, the procedure is that the commission does set the budget. There are two budgets in my humble, one for sure, a second one could be talked about and bantered a little bit, but you have two that you really have to fund. And one of those, in my opinion, is the county attorney's office because it's security, safety. And so because of that statutorily, you have to fund that department to handle the caseload. Now, interesting comment, the caseload in Bourbon County is interesting.
It's pretty interesting, yeah.
The numbers, the numbers are actually somewhat higher than you think they are. But, and that's putting pressure on the city, but there's, other jurisdictions have different ways of handling their numbers, so.
Right.
I know you didn't intend for this to be an open forum. Sorry. Going back to how she's paid, she's a salaried position, but maybe only potentially be here three times a month under salary?
Yeah, it doesn't.
She's not paid by the job. She's paid by the, by how many times she shows up, she's paid, she has a salary.
Right. And I'm not defending anything. I mean, obviously, right.
That's more a question of
Right. I would say that if you look at her, I mean.
It's a part-time. Right now, too.
It, let's just take the person out of the conversation completely.
Totally.
Right. Let's just talk about salaries, you know. The county attorney at this point, I think her, the base salary of that position is $51,000. The average attorney in Kansas right now, even on the bid's contract, is making, I don't quote me on this because it's been years, but I think it's $65 to $70 an hour. So you take that salary divided by 52 and divided by, you know, a number of weeks, you're looking at way under that, under that value. So there's other county attorneys within our district that are making $20,000 to $30,000 more and it's definitely a part-time position. And then the full-time position in our district is well past that, so.
And you look at the docket for our county and you see many more times the two assistants coming to court and not her. It's very sporadic.
That's, that's the county, as elected official, that's the county attorney's decision to do that. That's
So these 54 cases or trial cases are definitely wrong.
They're still, they're still in queue. They're not even close to being
Is that her name? Is that her?
No, she won't. The 54 cases have not been tried yet. So procedurally, let's go with a scenario in another jurisdiction. So if, well, to me, I've lived this life and I chose to be a lawyer and I believe strongly in the system. So when you have the system break down, there's protective gaps. So with cases that have happened in other jurisdictions, the appellate court says, oh, you got to hear that case again. And it does cost money. I don't dispute that at all. But there's those safety gaps that are in place. So we fortunately have not had those many jury trials because of COVID and so the safety gaps are not even needed because they haven't been heard yet.
I have a feeling that's getting ready to change though.
Well, it doesn't, yeah.
Now that this has come out, you know, I mean, plan on going to a lot more jury trials, you know.
Yeah, but you're going to, but it's very soon, there's a high probability you're going to have a new, you're going to have a new county attorney.
I mean,
It will have, there's no way.
When is the question?
Well, we can't answer that. That's up to the Supreme Court.
Right.
Right. And if they follow the recommendation of the committee, we will have a new county attorney in the future.
So what is the procedure for it then? You said it just goes right back to the Republican?
My belief is, based off the statute that I reviewed yesterday, the Republican Party, the chair of the Republican Party convenes a convention, they determine who the, it's the exact same way that happened the last time.
Right, unfortunate.
Well, and I think there's going to be a different procedure.
Same procedure with other positions in the Republican Party.
Right.
And as an elected official, then that person just really has to run that office with some prestige, not like how it's been handled to make remedy to what she and I were talking about.
It's a matter, it's a matter of, it's a matter of preference. I mean, that's the way our government's set up is that if you don't like that person, you can do a recall or you can unelect that person, you know. So if you don't, if someone runs against that person, you have an option, you have a choice. If no one runs against that person, then
What do you think the cost would be to the county to have a recall election like that?
I, I
Is it pretty expensive?
I don't know the, I don't know the ins and outs. Actually, Kendall would be an expert on, you know, recall elections and the cost, but
Do you know anything about it?
But for me, it's a timing, if you look at the timing factor of what it takes statutorily to do a recall election, you got a weird
Yeah.
timing thing. Because if the Supreme Court hears this case in four months or six months, then it's
It's already been six, you know, so, you know, and I don't have a lot of confidence in them right now.
You have, you have every right as a private citizen to start the recall.
I mean, does that end up costing the county money then though, to have that recall?
I think, yes, it does.
Okay.
You got to have signatures. You got to get the petition. It's got to be reviewed. I mean, it, I don't, there's no way you can do it under 120 days. I mean, there's just no way.
Yeah, probably not worth it. Then you talked about three months there and in the meantime, you're riding out the inevitable anyway. So why spend the money?
That's not my decision. Just giving you information.
But prospectively, that would be a foolish decision to make on the county's part.
I agree.
We just have to ride this out.
Yep.
The thing that people don't understand in county, if I'm right, is a county attorney, you do not have to live in the county where you are being elected. You can live in Kansas City and be the county attorney or Bourbon County.
You can live.
And that's by state statute, not by county.
Yeah, you can live in, you can live in another state actually and be the county attorney.
And I feel like that, that particular, you know, they're actually, you know, like, this is my community. I live here, so I care about what happens here, you know, like a lot of the other elected officials here. You know, you guys live here, so you care about what happens here, you know.
But you know, you just look at national, what goes on with the elected officials, you can see how much pain and agony people go through trying to get rid of someone that's in an elected position.
That's
Or the same position.
Right. I agree.
Or how difficult it is to be an elected official at this point.
Yes.
How difficult it is to be a citizen in Bourbon County at this point.
I understand.
Taxpayer.
Yeah, I understand.
But
So Republican chair are going to start looking at some perspective in the event that we would not make it to election time?
Well, you're going to have, regardless of the statute, the way, I think the May, the May date, and don't, I haven't memorized it obviously, but my understanding from my interpretation of the statute, the person who is appointed by the Republican Party for the intern will have to run for reelection in November of this coming year. So there's going to be a very short window of that person being the appointed county attorney.
So would it be a whole contract drawn up for that appointed attorney then?
No, that, a person who's elected has the terms.
Okay.
Has the four, would have a four-year term.
I'm just confused how pay would work for them. They would just like prorate it then as a salary?
No, they would still get the salary that was based by what the prior county attorney was.
The entire salary for that short amount of time?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
Divided by, yeah, prorate, divided by 12, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I didn't understand the question. Yeah, they would get, they would get what, they wouldn't get the whole amount. They would get what is paid for monthly.
Okay.
And that person who gets appointed, they theoretically could negotiate additional funds if need be, you know, just depending on what. We have no idea who's going to
Right.
No idea, so.
At this point, not to throw gas on the fire or be devil's advocate, but at this point, she still has a license, correct?
She absolutely does. She's still legally licensed to practice law in the state of Kansas.
But she has been found guilty of misconduct. She just hasn't been sentenced.
No, 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 no.
She has only had a panel of people give their opinion and say, there's been this clear misconduct. You have to have the Supreme Court disbar her.
The reason I say that is not to defend her, but it's simple to point out the fact that our hands are somewhat tied.
Right. But, I mean, can I ask you guys honestly here, what's your opinion? Are you in agreeance that this is a liability, you know? I mean,
I would be reluctant to do that just because of the liability issue.
You're adding more liability to it.
I mean, as a citizen, I'm the one with the liability though, you know. I mean, as a taxpayer, I'm the one with the liability, not you guys. You know, you guys, if you guys get caught liable, you pay with my money, you know what I mean? So
I'll comment.
I mean, I'm just throwing that out there though.
We do have some liability insurance to cover.
It doesn't come out of your bank account. It comes out of my bank account.
We pay it out of ours also.
Yeah, we pay insurance that helps us not tax us any free.
Yeah, right. I mean, you guys are taxpayers too, you know, but, you know, so I'm
I'll comment next week after he comes back and gives his comment.
I can respect that, you know. I appreciate that, so.
I think, the point is, I think all three of us are doing what we can.
Right. And I'm just here trying to give you guys some more options. Like I said, I understand. He's the county counselor, but I've consulted other attorneys too, you know, and these are some options that they've informed me of, you know, so.
And to be, and really, and to talk about those options, I mean, obviously, one of them is, it's just a vote, you know, and the other two are, we'll look into those. We were actually already started actively pursuing both of those options to see what we can be done on those. But obviously, with an elected official, with other elected officials within the organization, you have to be really careful about discrimination and things like that too. So, I mean, Commissioner Beth might have hit the nail on the head on some levels. And this is not the first time this has happened in this county.
And
Which seems to be, you know, I mean, it's a pattern.
It was a long time ago.
And then again, nothing happens until they're disbarred.
They're still actively
Right. But there is steps that we can take, you know. I mean, before she's disbarred, like I said, to encourage, you know, maybe someone to move along and try to let somebody else
You can ask any elected official on the planet to resign and if there's not a recall petition or they've committed some felony crime, there's no way you're going to be able to get that elected official.
Right. I mean, you can't force it, but you can ask, you know. I mean, I feel like that would be the right thing for you guys to do at this point. So that's my point, you know. I mean, I understand you guys' hands are tied and I understand you can't force anything, but we can take steps, you know, and try to protect ourselves a little bit more too, you know. I mean, that's important to me, so. All right, well, that's all I have. So, thank you.
Okay, Surbonne review. I have, Kendall, did you get that printed out for, for the signature?
They sent it last night to me and I brought it to you this morning.
Okay, this was the latest we got and we just got it last night. This is the final on the Surbonne. Once we sign this, then it becomes effective. This is what we saved over $50,000 for the life of the bond and got it reduced.
Pretty good deal.
That's a good deal.
Yeah.
Sure is. So I will move that we, the sign is the final on the Surbonne refinancing.
I second that.
Your second?
I second.
Now, the receipt for the purchase price is $685,000. So, 6,950,605.60. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We need a motion for you to sign it.
Can.
Okay. I make a motion to allow the chairman, Leno Herr, to sign the Surbonne review.
Your second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, this is the second bond issue we was approved this year for reduction. First one or more.
A lot of savings to the
Yeah.
Public.
Yep. Here you go, Kendall. Thanks. All right, let the first comments, have you anything?
Kendall's the only one here. Kendall, would you like to say anything?
Kindle, counsel.
More green cards. Got a couple of things here this morning, commissioners. We have basically stopped, going to be filing any new cases for a little bit under the tax bill. We made that call last week. We have right under 100 properties for the first sale. We're hoping to get that geared up and have those sold in August. And then the next time around, we're hoping to have the remaining, you know, 250 to 300 done. The abstract company is progressing as fast as they can and we're hoping to have that done in two sales by the end of this year. You know, I can't make any guarantees, but we are going to have the first sale. And Patty and I did talk about that and that was our mutual decision on that. So hopefully, we get those on the land, on the sale quickly and get those in the newspaper and get those published. our mutual, um, decision on that, so, uh, hopefully we get those, uh, on the land, or on the, um, sell quickly and get those in the newspaper and get those published. Social media, um, is really becoming a problem with the truth of the matter, I think that we need to, we've talked about this, um, prior commissions about um, not really responding to things that, um, we can't really, everyone's got their opinion, um, and I think opinions are great, they're actually wonderful thing, and they're part of our process, but we maybe wanna have, um, a fact checker, or some type of ability to say, hey, look, this is what's happened, I mean, sometimes misinformation can create the wrong type of atmosphere, and so having the facts could be really important to, to look at in the future, we have a system through our Facebook account, maybe to address some of those issues, um, so, just bringing that up, something to talk about, I think, um, Shane, not to put more weight on his shoulders, but I think he'd be okay with having that, you know, kinda giving the county's perspective on, here's what's happened, you know, especially now with the wind farm going on, and other things happening with the hospital and things like that, just saying, hey, this is what we're, this is what we're doing. And we actually talked about having coffee chats, or, you know, some type of, um, thing we could put on the, the YouTube with elected officials, or even commissioners saying, hey, here's what's happening, here's the facts, that type of stuff, so just another time to think that out, and kinda put that out for you guys to um, think about, and maybe direct someone to have that function within our administration.
Kendall, would you would like to put that on the agenda for next week?
I'll have Shane here.
All right.
Cause we have the ability technology wise to do some pretty neat things now, I mean, COVID's given us the ability to, you know, actually have like our own TV channel. You know, having that moments to have those elected officials to talk about things, and that, I think that would be a good platform for them, for them to get out their, their perspective, even if they're not, you know, a hundred percent facts.
Hopefully they are.
Well, in their world, they, you know, truth is reality, reality is truth, you know, I could look at a crime scene and have a different take on it than someone else, even though we saw the same thing, so, perspect, you know, people's perception on things are always different, so, and reality is always different, but at least we can get some information out, so people can make their own decisions on what their reality is.
You mentioned social media, et cetera, are we making progress on our tower, or is that a question for Shane?
Yes, no, actually, I know a little bit about that, um, they are bringing, they're not bringing a crane in now, which is awesome, they're gonna use, um, big trucks and, um, get a police system going to get those microwaves down, and I know that they're talking about it being, um, done within the next thirty to forty-five days, I'm getting those old microwave dishes off that tower, so we can start using it for internet issues, so.
Really, I can see that real area get internet.
Yeah, I know that the fence has been put up, they're, you know, it's been sprayed, they're gonna clean the trees out of the base wires and things like that, so. Yeah, that's progressing. I do have a meeting with Mr. Farmer, um, the city attorney, uh, this week at, Thursday at ten AM, we were talking about the KDOT road issue out at the, um, south of town, where the KDOT building is, we're hoping to have all that, um, taken care of, um, at least with the deeds, and how they're gonna be transferred between the two entities, and between KDOT to the city, to the city, to the county, or whatever you guys decide to do, so hopefully by the next commission meeting or the week after that, by the end of June, we're hoping to have that problem taken care of, we'll be also discussing, uh, the sewer district, um, just contractually and looking at that legally at that meeting, so, we'll be progressing on that. I am dealing with an election issue with the state of Kansas on how many signatures we need for a possible petition that's gonna be submitted to Kendall's office, it is a core request, um, I have made some phone calls with the state, and hopefully we'll be getting that answer back this week or before the next commission meeting, it's, it's the legal nerd in me, the part of the law that sometimes I really like, there's some questions about population mass, signatures, you know, differences in accounts. My gut's telling me that it's gonna go back to the last election, but, um, you know, I don't want the city attorney to come back and say, oh no, we need to use the nineteen eighty-seven or nineteen eighty-three numbers, so um, we'll be getting that, hopefully nailed down here soon. Uh, I do have a cemetery issue we've been working on for some time, I have, uh, worked with Susan on this, um, it's, um, old law. You know, cemeteries have been around since the beginning of time, you know, in our state, so, there's some really old administrative orders and things like that I've been reviewing, it's just a matter of getting those answers and, and time on task, so.
Did you get a call yesterday?
I did.
Okay.
So we're trying to.
Actually, um, I told her that I'd be even more involved, go attend some meetings if I needed to.
So we're hoping to have that, so I don't, I think the question is, is a matter of how the boards are set up, and how the budgets are set up. Uh, it's like anything in rural America, there's people to be involved, they're sometimes hard to come by, you know, volunteers and things like that are becoming less and less, I mean, look at Rotary and Quanahs and just people running for office, it's, it's, we're all really busy, and so it's a hard thing to have people to go out and mow cemeteries and be on the boards and, you know, be on the Republican Party chair, I mean, it goes on and on, so, I mean, I could go on for an hour about all the different places that need help, so, that's one of the things.
What's unique about that one is I actually have family in both of those cemeteries, and so I told her I would volunteer to do whatever I needed to.
So maybe, well, Susan just volunteered, I'll take that off my list. That one, Kendall, I'm off the list on that one, Susan's guy. Thank you, Susan, um, I need to, uh, ask for a motion to allow Mr. Harris to help Eric with regards to some soybean issues that we have out at the landfill, uh, Mr. Harris was actively involved when he was an employee with that issue, and we just need to come to some, uh, resolution with that with the state, so I need a motion.
You need a motion to allow Jim?
I'll make a motion to allow Jim and, uh, work to work with Eric Bailey on the soybean issue at the landfill.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I did have a, an executive session on non-elected, but we did take care of that this morning, so, those things that we discussed in that executive session are important, and I'll need some direction from the chairman at some point, so I'll be talking with him this week to make sure we follow up, and make sure that he has everything he needs.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take these green cards if you guys don't mind.
No.
They're very important to me.
How bad? Here, public comment, who wants to go first?
I will.
Okay.
I'm Denise Duncan, and I own Venedal Alamo, the winery, the vineyard down there.
I can get it to you.
And what we're doing, and I've, I've already give a copy to Kendall and Justin, what we're doing on the third page, if you'll look, our original, we planted our first vines in two thousand and eleven,
Mm-hmm.
opened the winery in two thousand and fifteen, so we have our original premise approved area, so what we're doing, because we've been exiled out into the county from the city, we moved out there, so, we're expanding, we're taking the fermenting and crusher and distemmer out to the next barn, that's right by the vineyard, so all we're asking is approval for Kendall to sign it, so I can send it to ABC, the ABC agent's already come out there, and he's happy with it.
Okay, so this permit really only, only for ABC?
Yeah, it's something that I'll send up there to them, so they know it'll become a bonded area, because it's, yeah, and I did wanna throw this in, that Poplar Road is the only feeder road that's not paved, and we also have an RV park out there, and we get hip camp and harvest hosts that come from all over the country, in fact, when one left this morning, they were downtown shopping, we're averaging twenty a week, I mean, twenty a month, which means about forty people that are coming into town and spending money, and I think it'd be a good, and we have two really nice homes down there now, and we have two, three businesses down there, and we have the, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar arm for the railroad, so, I'm hand in hand. But if y'all would just do this for me, I'll be happy.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Justin?
It's gone.
Any questions?
No, I, I will, um, we are a non-zoned, non-coded county, so obviously, the, the reason that she's having to do this is through the state of Kansas for the alcohol license, so even if you wanted to stop her, you would not be able to.
Right.
But I, I just wanted to get your blessing on it.
Right, yeah, we appreciate you're getting your blessing, I'm just saying, you can build a Taj Mahal out there, there's not much we can do.
Well, you know, no, but what we did, we, we traded the, the welding machine in for the vines, so there's a thousand Arundel vines out there, and fifty-two blackberries, the two old people plant it. Mid-sixties and mid-seventies.
What's happening over the western United States, our wine production in Kansas is gonna become very important.
Good.
Yes.
Yeah.
Used to be a lot.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I make a motion, we allow Kendall to sign this.
Second, go ahead.
Permit, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Who's next?
Susan, you're up.
Anyone else?
They always skip you.
It's okay, he just doesn't like me, I think.
I always skip you, and the reason I skip you, cause you need to be the last, you're the finance director.
I really don't have a whole lot to report, uh, Clifton had asked for the wage, um, schedule, so I've handed that out, um, we don't have to go over it today, but it'll just be for when we start doing budget stuff, so, that's really all I have at this point, um.
Well, speaking of wage, wages, I had a discussion with Eric because of, um, his losing some employees, key employees, uh, and he was wanting to, or was kinda kicking some ideas around, and I says, you know, we've, we've had this discussion on progression wages, wages, and, uh, he, he was saying, well, I would like to have a salary at such and such, with a starting wage here, ending wage here.
Yep.
And I says, you know, is your budget, uh, would your budget sustain that? And, uh, he hasn't filled all the positions that he had asked for, and he said he would be willing to give up a position to, to do that.
Okay.
So we'll just bring it to the commission.
Well, we'll just need to set up some wage bands for him, then, so, but yeah, it's, it's it's very easy to, to, to do, and I think we probably ought to be comparing ourselves to other, other counties, to get an idea.
Some of the heavy equipment operators that he's talking about, if you are in the private market, we are very sorely underpaid for heavy equipment operators.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Next, go ahead.
Susan and I have talked about this too, we, we, um, did this a couple of years back, and we have the salary comparisons for other counties within our region, and we can go back and do that again, but we already know the answer.
We do.
Can we get a copy of that, or we don't work that, or?
Yeah.
I don't have it right now.
It's right up here.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have to get in here, I'm so sorry, I can say. All the information, though, I mean, we.
It's two years.
Two thousand seventeen, I think.
Yeah, somewhere around sixteen or seventeen. Seventeen.
Oh, that'd show us how far we're still behind.
We were doing two thousand fifteen, we were trying to get to fifteen wages back in seventeen.
Yes. I have it.
Here's one of the ones that's really important. Cause our taxes are based off of early consumption. There's this one.
Okay, same one, okay.
No, this is salad, and this is population. Jim, why, Commissioner Harris, why this is important as you look at our, um, population projections, and, you know, the new census data
is gonna be really important, um, hopefully, it's not trending the way that it's trending based off of the information, this is from, I think, if I remember right, this might have been, um, projections done by the US Census Bureau, so, it's not good news.
Very, very bad news.
Right, so.
And then we got some.
You know, Justin, you and, you and I have been tracking obituaries for a number of years, haven't we? And a lot of our decline comes from, from this loss of the population, plus people moving.
I think I found it. This isn't one of our better ones, but it's, it's here, yeah, here, if this is, and this is, I, I, I will try to, uh.
I'm gonna take the glasses on this.
You're gonna need your glasses.
I'm gonna need my glasses on this one. It's small print, guys.
Hey, we got.
So what you're looking at is basically, uh, um, different counties that we try to compare ourselves with, that, you know, obviously, the really interesting part of the, the starting point of this is the evaluation itself with the, with the, with Fort Scott and Bourbon County, we're one of the lowest in the state. We were, I think, the third lowest the last time I looked, I think we've actually become, maybe even, um, we're still probably in the top, or bottom five, right, Susan, I'm not, so, um, evaluation's really important, cause that's how the, the, basically the mill starts, and so when you start with that process, you look at your population mass, you look at the valuation, it can, it canates a real conundrum on what you can do budgetary wise. Good thing is, evaluation has been going up, um, which is what the commission and this, this commission and what prior commissions have worked really hard on trying to have that happen, I mean, the NRP's, I think, are working. There's lots of activity happening in the county and in the city right now, obviously, just the sale of properties create that valuation to go up, and that gives you more budget authority. But then that also has some interesting things you should maybe look at possibly with your mills too, and Susan's, I know, is gonna be talking about this, uh, in nauseam, and probably don't, I don't need to be doing it, but there's a lot happening with our mills, and what's happened legislatively this year too, that's gonna affect how you guys go forward, especially in two thousand twenty-three. It's gonna be a really interesting budget year, so, you take the population mass, the projections, I, I, and you take, take the comparisons that you have in front of you from Anderson County, Jackson County, different places, it picture isn't good, and you, you wanna cut taxes, and it's important to do that too, so, you have a lot of, um, really tough decisions to make, and we Commissioner, Chairman O'Hare and I talked about the two thousand twenty-two budget was gonna be a very interesting one, and it's, we talked about that even two or three years ago. And the reason being is just the perfect storm, think, one of the good things that happened is our evaluation's gone up, we weren't expecting that evaluation to go up as much as it has, we, we were not expecting COVID, but on the other hand, we weren't expecting the population movement into our community, which has been an awesome thing, I mean, it's really been an awesome thing, some of the data is crazy.
One thing, a positive movement on COVID, which is, which is very, it wasn't a positive at all, except for people shop locally. You know, sales tax, revenue.
Yeah.
That's, that's a positive side of.
Well, I think, I think there's, well, I think there's, there's a second positive, and, and, and people can disagree with me on this, but there is a migration that's occurred into our community.
Yeah, true.
Yep, there is.
Yeah, land values of, I was talking to a realtor last night, land values are, a lot of private sales are happening, and land values are getting to that, I mean, I, I couldn't believe what was said, I'll have to verify this again, but three to four thousand an acre is becoming commonplace.
Any businesses maybe because of the migration there.
Right.
So that just goes, you know, people wanna be here, I think that's been, a, a migration that's maybe been happening over the last five, ten years, maybe, where people of, they have kids, seeing the value where they might have been big city life, see the value in small town, in small communities.
There's, there's a lot of really great books that are talking about what you're discussing, that, you know, Caught in the Middle, um, there's, is a really good book by, I think, I can't remember the author, sorry. But, um, it talks about rural communities that are within close proximity of a major metropolitan area, and we're actually really in close proximity to two major metropolitan areas now, so because of that, uh, our proximity and Caught in the Middle of those two areas is creating a really great thing, and I think COVID's accelerated that, I think people have got out of the cities because, hey, you know, we don't wanna be here because of this, we're, and also because of the proximity to really Johnson County really helps, where, I mean, one hundred ninety-ninth street is being developed as we speak, and.
When do you have time to radio?
At night, I don't sleep.
No, you don't.
I don't sleep, but no, this, this is the kinda stuff that just makes me really, I get so super excited about, cause the evaluation's gone up, and.
Just the, the, the resurgence of, of, in, in a food market, people really wanting to know where their food comes from, and so you know, like, you don't need one more thing on your radar, but anything that the county or city could do to help that prosper, somebody out here, I know someone who wants to, you know, create a bigger business here.
Right.
For food.
Well, I think, I think the, you know, we, Mr. Coon, um, it's been three weeks ago now, came in and asked about, you know, what the county can do for incentives, I mean, our, in our, in our, our NRP program is, um, excellent, I mean, Ms. Haner did a really good job of setting that up, and it's, it's a very big advantage to I know firsthand, cause I've opened businesses here and used the NRP program, and it, it's really good, it's a great thing.
But again, getting that word out, because I still see so many people trying to do that, you know, and maybe they just wanna run out of the home, and they're, and that's fine.
Right, that's the best way to start.
There's others that wanna.
Right.
Do the next step, and.
Well, I mean, and we know that we got a, um, food facility, hopefully, that's gonna be breaking ground soon, we got some things to work out with some roads and different things like that, but, and that, you know, this is a citizen comment, is, are we ready for public comments yet?
Well, I think you, oh.
Yeah.
I wanna give the. I, I want to give the Kansas Department of Transportation a huge shout-out. I think that the paved road project that they did on sixty-nine highway, it just looks really, I mean, aesthetically pleasing. The, the washboard coming towards my building, hearing semis hitting that and making the noise, it's gone. I mean, it's just, I think it's absolutely awesome what they did, it's beautiful. I mean, not, they'll probably never get to watch this, but it's just so awesome what they've done, and they did it really professionally, I mean, we didn't have a lot of, you know, roads were shut down, I mean, it was really awesome.
Like I said, I hope they use some very strong asphalt.
Well, it was thick.
Those trucks coming up are hitting that at, at a hundred and ten degrees, and asphalt front about a two hundred and thirty.
Well, I think, I think they did it more than a couple inches, I think a little bit better than they did the last time.
Okay.
I think, just watching it. I didn't get a chair, I didn't get a chair and a cold drink and sit there and watch it, but I should have.
Semis coming in there, throwing their brakes on, hit those stop signs pretty tough when I stepped.
Right. Well, and one other thing on the, the salary schedule, we could go through and, and take a look at, I mean, Bill's done an excellent, you know, Sheriff Martin's done an excellent job of getting us that information. I think he would have no issues getting that information to us again, you know, we could go through and.
That, that she has access to the same information that we can get, will cost the same thing.
Right, so just whatever we can get it, because it's, it's a lively discussion.
And I know when we went through this process before, the, the comparatives was just right, spot on.
But it wasn't good news back then?
No.
No. No.
Not sure it'll be good news this time.
My first year of budget process sitting here, been through with the public works, but we'll have several work sessions, is that the plans?
Yep.
Good.
Once we start getting budgets together.
I have lots of.
This'll be the last year that's like this, right? Next year, the legislators have made it, the budgeting process different, right?
Yes, so, um, you will probably have to have your budget set by, is it June or July twenty-second?
July.
Because a letter has to go out if you're going to have a special hearing.
So the special hearings are going to be this year.
Special hearings are this year, but the letter is what's going to trigger the special hearings, so we'll have to have that information to her, so you're.
I think they have to be done by July twenty-second.
I was thinking it was June, it was an, it's an unreasonable date, it was really early, it was really early. Yeah, yeah, everybody has to get.
Could I get on the agenda for mine, I'll take two seconds, could I get on the agenda next week for budget?
We, uh, it's getting to the point that we're not going to be able to meet that date, because we don't have all the, all the budgets in. And we, we have.
This year, we, it's not, you're not subject to that this year, you will be subject to it next year.
That's what I thought, it's next year, okay.
But you, you are, you're subject to this special hearing.
So the special hearing, just to clarify on my point, is if the valuation's gone up and there's additional budget authority, do we have to have a special hearing this year to use that additional budget authority hypothetically?
Yes.
Yes.
So Kendall, we really need to get the budgets done fast.
Yes.
But you have through October.
But you have to have the letter out first, all right?
No, not for this year, a letter.
Not for this year.
Okay, 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 good. But next year, they're going to have to have the budgets done by June twenty-second?
Thank you, Susan, I, I explained briefly correctly this morning on the radio.
Yes.
Just, just to clarify, because I'm slightly confused, so.
Okay.
You can use your budget, your additional budget authority this year if the letter is not out by June twenty-second?
Additional budget authority.
Through the evaluation increase.
No, you would have to, okay, you'll have to send a letter.
Okay.
To the, to the taxpayers, to the discipline.
Right, right.
But you will have to have a special hearing.
Okay, but you.
You have an extended period.
Okay.
If you do the special hearing, you don't have to have your budget done until October.
So the, so the, but next year, the letter will have to be out by, by the end of June?
Yes, I think, as far as.
And we have to verify that one.
So you guys really do.
Because like Susan says, we really don't know what our, what our budget will, of our, till we get the evaluations, we won't know what we actually have.
You'll have that by June fifteenth.
By what?
By June fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
What's the, any of you got a calendar? We need to get a calendar in here again.
That's a big deal, evaluation.
Next Tuesday, you'll have your evaluation back, so you, you'll have to.
Normally it's come back.
It happens every two years, evaluation changes.
Every year you can get it, every, every year you can get a evaluation.
Evaluation's going to be back before the, once.
Um, the other's close, I think.
Okay.
So the process next year, we're gonna, you're gonna have to start your budgets in April.
We have to start in March.
Yeah, March or April.
Yeah, absolutely, you will.
Because you're gonna have to have that letter out and published by the end of June, and so you're gonna have to know what your budgets are.
Prior, we were, we were almost in August before we got all the budgets in.
September sometimes.
Before we got the budgets in.
Right, oh, I see, yeah, you're right. Big, that's a big change for elected officials and department heads, they're gonna have to realize that if they want any increase in, or use any increase in funding, they're gonna have to, and they're gonna have to personally do it, not the commission, right? So if an elected official wants to ask for increases in their budget, it's not really on these guys or the commission anymore, it's going to be going out in front of the public and saying, I want X, Y, and Z.
I, I think you only have to have, the county as a whole only has to have one special.
One special hearing.
That says somebody within our budget document is doing an increase, and so that covers.
And so they're going, that person, I would assume, the person who wants the increase is the one that's going to try to sell it to the community.
And that's where it gets really sticky, is because you have your cemetery boards, you have your, 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 and that's where I'm unclear on it.
Right.
Is your cemetery board, your townships, all those, any of those go up.
Right.
You've got to, there's got to be a special hearing, but I think they're responsible for that.
So, so if the valuation goes up, they're gonna have to have a special meeting to use the additional evaluation regardless. So if they don't want to have a special hearing, the, they, it stays flat, so where's the additional funding goes?
It's lost, they don't, they don't, they are, they're not able to capture it.
Is it returned back to the taxpayers?
We essentially.
Well, hang on, hang on for a sec, hang on for a second. So let's say that, that we have a multi-million, let's say we have a multi-million dollar business come in. Just, let's say we have a multi-million dollar business come in, they build a ten million dollar building.
Right.
And it goes on the tax rolls. That increases the valuation. We don't get to use it unless we have a special hearing.
That is true.
But, and a perfect, let's say, the real reality is they'll probably have a ten to fifteen-year NRP, so it won't be on the.
Will be ten years, right, true, but anything coming off NRP, we still can't use it.
Right, well, you could if you have a special hearing.
Yeah, if you have a special hearing, yes.
Would it do?
Or.
But, but again.
We can use it by reducing taxes.
But, but again, if you, if you have, if you have these, if you have this, these new houses and, and new businesses coming in, and your valuation goes up, so it's just put into the pool. So once you start raising that, that, the mill levy, once you start raising the mill levy, it affects all taxpayers, not just the new businesses or property.
But going back to what I, the, the only part I'm disconnecting on is that, so if, when you have a special hearing and the, and the crowd goes, the people go, no.
They can still vote yes.
They can still vote yes, right?
What it does is, the tax lib replaces taking it to the vote of the people to just having a special hearing. It just replaces it, that's what it does.
So if the people don't like what, if they go ahead and still vote yes, they can un-elect them if they want.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep.
Just trying, just trying, just trying to figure it out.
I know, I know.
Hopefully have all this increased valuation, we can drop the mill levy.
What's that?
Hopefully we'll have a lot of increased valuation, and that will mean we can drop the mill levy and pass on the savings we hope to our citizens.
Your budget doesn't, your budget won't decrease, your mill levy will.
Right, but we won't raise the mill.
No.
That's what I mean.
Well, we've been after that since last year, we, we reduced it, we're going to, we're on track to try to do the initiative.
Yeah, you did a good job, and we want to continue looking at that mill levy.
Okay. Commissioner's comments.
Well, I think, yeah. Speaking of the budgets and the mill levies and everything else, um, we've talked about having town halls, whatever you want to call them, to find out what people want and what they want to fund. So I think we need to discuss that, or I can do it on my own, or we do it as a commission, you know, once a month, once something. I mean, we probably ought to start that, in my opinion, because if we're going to, you know, Justin brought up the Facebook thing, and, and Facebook drives me crazy, because.
Oh, yeah.
People, people believe what's on there, and, you know, I don't watch CNN or Fox News or anything else, because half of it's not true, or more. Facebook's worse. So, um, you know, if we can have somebody do that, that's good, I guess. I still won't like Facebook, even if we try to correct it, because people are still going to believe nonsense that's on there. So I, I just think we need to have some, I don't know, town halls, what do you call them?
Yeah.
Whatever, coffees, I don't drink coffee, so I'm not going to call it that.
Do you want facilitator for that?
Um.
Or you just want to, like.
Are you volunteering?
That's the way I talk it.
I would say I totally took it that way.
Well, what comes to my mind is, is you could facilitate, here are the categories that a county typically funds. And so what would you like to see different, or?
I, I think it's important, because people, and you can throw stuff at me, if the people watching can throw stuff at me through the TV. But the fact of people complaining about taxes, but then they call and want the road paved, okay, that's hypocritical. I'm sorry, I'm just going to call it what it, I'm tired of being nice, I'm just going to call it what it is, that's, you're being a hypocrite. Um, you know, and, I mean, I got a letter the other day, unsigned.
Of course.
I'm not reading that, it's unsigned. Um, I mean, I read it, personally read it, but more than half of what was in there was not true. Um, and so we need to offer those things, so people can come, and if they really want to come, then come. If one person shows up, great, if twenty, a hundred, that would be better, um, because they're not getting the truth.
So probably evening meeting.
Yep, yep, sometime in the evening. Um, you know, uh, Tuesday, not Monday night, Tuesday night, Tuesday night, city has their commission meeting, so probably not good time.
Wednesday evenings?
What?
Wednesdays?
Wednesday, Thursday.
I know it's church night.
That's church night, so Wednesday or Thursday, Monday, Wednesday or Thursday.
Monday's the best for me, because.
Monday's good.
Um.
For another month, baseball.
But, you know, Monday's probably, probably is good. Um, but, you know, and then if you want to complain, come to the meeting and complain, we'll give you time. Um, but I will tell you, I do not get my information from Facebook.
No kidding, I don't either.
So, you know.
I'll be blunt.
Justin said opinions are great, and they are, they are, but hopefully, your opinion is, has some fact, some basis. If not, don't just come in there like a river, a train and blowing and going, I mean, try to be polite, I mean, my goodness.
Well, you know, you know, the, and I've watched it for a number of years, I'm sure you have too. You know, the, the forums that they created, like Fort Scott Topics, was a good idea, but for Facebook turned into Fort Scott Topics.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, so as a commissioner, whether we do that as a commission or not, I want to do that in the future, near future.
I'm not opposed to, you know, have something over to the Empress.
I assumed we would, I mean, I kind of figured you both would be on board.
We tried this, we tried this early on before, and no one would show up.
I know, I know, but we give them a chance.
I like it, so we have it over at the Empress, or something like that, where you give more people.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the River Room upstairs.
We should do it somewhere besides here, or we can go to, you know, Hammond has the community center, I don't know what's out of Union Town, because I don't live out there, but there might be.
Yeah, probably need to move around.
There might be multiple places to do it, and, um.
Well, we, we even reached out and started in the communities, which I think is an excellent idea, and it was in the evenings.
Yeah, let's come out.
Yeah, and if people show up, great. I know, and, and that's probably what's going to happen, because, and again, I, you know, people can be mad at me for saying it, but it's a lot easier to hide behind that screen.
Oh, it is, you know, years and years ago, when I was in the business, uh, email was one of those new things. And it was an awful easy to, to write an email and send it, if you didn't have to wa, look at somebody in the face.
Yep, yep.
I agree with you, Clifton, we should move forward with that, because really, that will help us possibly in the budgeting process to understand what the citizens really want for services. I mean, I mean, we, we try to grade a road every three weeks, well, is that really what they want? They do, but then sometimes they don't want to pay for it.
I have a road in front of our property out there that they, it felt like they would grade it four or five times, but the east-west ones, they would never grade, and the one in front of my house, they didn't grade it that often. But that's, you know, you can't monitor that, you can't, you know.
Well, and, and those types of services cost a lot of money, so what's really important to the citizens?
Well, I said, I've said it recently.
Mostly I hear, I care about the road in front of my house.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't seen a motorator in eight months, well, you know better than that, so.
Somebody, somebody told me a long time ago, and, and I'll never forget this, but we're, we're human, and so my headache, to me, is worse than your brain cancer to you. So.
All right, Ms. Moder, Moderator?
Good job, Susan.
You want to set that up first?
Do you want it on a Monday night?
Yeah, and I'm not sure the Empress Center would be big enough, I hope it's not.
Well, it's a good place to start.
Try to start, start.
Let's start, I hope.
Because you can get quite a few people in there.
Yeah.
Maybe she'll get some good responses, and we can have it at a different location.
Well, again, the city uses that river, runs, holds lots of people upstairs, a barbecue place, it's free.
That'd be a great one, hopefully it's just the facts, though, probably the facts.
Then we might have to give people a free drink to show up. I'm kidding.
Big, big, big crowd, I suppose.
Say, like, let's just have bootshines.
Four hundred people show up.
There's liability off the heat gang, I know, you're kidding, I know.
Okay.
We get some hell of a pity, so we got everybody liquored up.
Yeah.
I didn't really say that, did I? Okay, you have anything else?
I don't have anything.
I don't either.
Fishing was good last week, so.
Uh, make a motion, Leager.
Here, second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.